I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 22nd meeting of the New Bern Board of Aldermen. At this time, the prayer will be given tonight by Alderman Odom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Reverend Johnson if he would come open us up with a word of prayer this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Jeffrey and to the mayor and to the other Aldermans and staff of this great city. Shall we bow our heads? The Word of God says there's a time and a season for everything under the sun. A time to be silent and a time to listen. Let us pray. Our wise, eternal gracious God, our Father in heaven, we humbly bow before you on this blessed day to thank you for bringing us all together in one place that we might listen to each other. We thank you, dear God, for our city of fishers that you have endowed with wisdom and knowledge and understanding to lead us. And we, as citizens, come today, Father, to listen to them and we ask that you may give us the ability to listen tonight. For we believe that out of listening to each other that the answer, the solution that we need to make our city stronger and better will come forth. Speak, Lord, to us, for you certainly have a word of truth for us as we are concerned about matters that face us at this time. We listen to you, Lord. Have your way. Your way is the best way, your way is the only way, and we're not going to wait until the end of this meeting to shout the victory. We're going to shout it right now. Amen, amen, amen.
We should join in to pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I put up your call the robe?
Alderman Bingle, here. Orderwoman Harris, present. Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay. We'll get going to see. General, does anybody have any changes they want to make in the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, if you don't mind, I would like to bring item 15 up where it is just there's a lot of individuals out in the audience and I want to go ahead and take care of that matter if everyone agrees.
Second. Can we have a motion and a second? Is there a discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same. Motion carries. At this time, the consent agenda.
Mayor, move. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same. Okay, Mr. Stevens, item number 15.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board, item number 15 is a discussion on substantially damaged city-owned assets that we have as a result of the damages sustained during Hurricane Florence. Before you and included in your packet is a report of the building repair estimates for city-owned properties damaged during Hurricane Florence. That has been received by our insurance carrier and adjuster. The contents of the report, as you see, includes the properties that have been substantially damaged. There was an additional sheet that was given to y'all prior to the meeting that highlighted those, just so you could pick those out easily. Keep in mind substantially damaged properties are those that have been damaged 50% or greater than the value of what the land, I'm sorry, what the building value is. So, case in point, the old Parks and Recreation Administration building, 1620 National Avenue, flood-related damages to that totaled $65,833. As you recall, we were asking for a minimum bid on that property of $85,000 whenever we were entertaining bids for that particular piece of property. The BP Storage Building at 26 Oats, who Oaks Road, that was acquired from the city some time ago, it sustained some substantially damaged portions of the property due to the flooding and also some wind-related damages as well. That totaled up to be $22,413. And the fourth property, Training Classroom, 333 Glen Burnie Road, the Training Classroom we're referring to there is at the fire grounds, the training fire grounds for our fire department close to where wastewater treatment plant is. That was, that building was substantially flooded during the storm due to its location and elevation. Its sustained damage is totaling $108,630. And then finally, the ones that are identified here, and I will say there's two other ones that we currently have in process that weren't included in this list that we wanted to have included as far as our damages, and I'll talk about those in a minute, but the final one that's listed on here that was substantially damaged was the Recreation Center Stanley White, and that's at 901 Chapman Street, and the flood-related damages to that property totaled $606,732. Now, keep in mind, the two other properties, by the way, are over at our Leaf and Limb Facility, there's an old block building that we had that we used a lot of for storage. That particular building was flooded, and the other that we are looking at is also at Stanley White Recreation Center that's included as part of Henderson Park because there's actually two pieces of property there, and that is the restroom facility that we have that's kind of right there central to the Henderson Park area and the ball fields. That was flooded substantially as well, so we have the insurance adjusters going out there to take a look at those two to determine a value as well. So, and what we needed to, it's actually included in the Henderson Field Restrooms as $24,047 on this list, this number item 17. However, we need to see what the value of that property is, so that one's kind of awaiting an appraisal to determine what the value is so that we can determine whether or not it was substantially damaged. Keep in mind that items that are substantially damaged are required based on our code to be brought up to the latest code, that being electrical codes, elevations of the structure, as well as the HVAC units and other electrical items would have to be lifted above what the building flood elevation is currently in New Bern, which is the base flood elevation plus two feet of freeboard. In addition, we also have to comply with any other building codes that would need to be met at that point, as I said, the electrical codes, the fire codes, things like that. So, when we talk about substantially damaged properties, when it goes over that 50% threshold, then at that point it's required for us to meet those new codes and criteria. I think that's all that I have right now, and I'm happy to answer any kind of questions that the board may have regarding any of these. Essentially, what the staff are looking at at this point is on these particular properties, the ones that are substantially damaged, staff is seeking direction from the board to recognize these as substantially damaged and that we are going to have to do something about them regarding bringing them up to the code, whether that's at its current location or through the 428 mitigation process when we submit it through FEMA. It can be elevated at the current location or it can be moved to a different alternative location, but it has to be submitted as part of the project worksheet if that's what your plan is to do so. One option that I will tell you that kind of is a difficult one, and I'm not sure that that is an option, is replacing the properties or fixing the properties as they are at the current locations because then that will subsequently make the properties ineligible for future funding from FEMA. So, if this property is sustained, any of these properties sustain damage in the future due to a flooding event, then at that point, those properties most likely would not receive any kind of reimbursement from FEMA as far as our being able to mitigate the damages that occur in the future. So, I'm happy to answer any kind of questions and staff's here as well if you have.
Mr. Stevens, so what you're looking for tonight is basically the board's lessons on whether we want to do a 428 mitigation or just do repairs. Is that correct?
Essentially, and obviously there's some significant numbers here and obviously some significant decision-making regarding, you know, community involvement in certain locations. I think some of them are no brainers, but other ones are, you know, some more difficult decision-making, if you want to call it that. But ultimately, it is a point where I think based on that substantial damage, you are going to have to bring it up to code, which is going to cost a tremendous amount of money, and potentially you, in the case of Stanley White Recreation Center, you would potentially lose the ability to use it as its current use. So, case in point, that facility sits at about an elevation six. Our current base flood elevation at the lowest point in New Bern is 10, eight, it's about eight plus two feet of freeboard, which is 10. Come July or June-ish, when the new flood maps are adopted, that new elevation may become 11 with the base flood being nine with the two feet of freeboard. So therefore, to, how am I going to say this, to predict the future to somewhat and look in the crystal ball and think that this property will flood again, if you were to repair it as it is at its current location, I would almost be willing to bet the house and the farm on it because it is at elevation six. So, what I'm saying is, in a nutshell, is that this, these particular properties, the 428 mitigation, is an opportunity for you to either raise the property in its current locations or relocate it at a different location outside of a flood-prone area, and that's kind of where we are right now.
So, we really, there's nothing, there's no decisions as to what to do with any of these buildings until we have determined whether or not FEMA is going to deny or grant us the 428 mitigation, correct?
That would be, that would be correct. We really need to know from them whether they would accept. I mean, as you know, that's a process. The acceptance of the 428 mitigation plan is a process that goes through a cost-benefit scenario where they look at potential future loss of the property and the amounts that they would have to pay if they were to just fix it as is and repair it, or through the 428 mitigation process, they eliminate, eliminate that future liability that they may have in reimbursing the city on that loss. So, that's the reason why they look at the 428 mitigation on a cost-benefits narrative.
I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what the other board members want to do, but I think we would really be missing out on a good opportunity if we don't give the city manager direction as to apply for the 428 mitigation money, so.
Mark, what time span are you looking at for us going with the 428 mitigation? Hearing back from FEMA, I mean even to prior experiences with properties that was flooded, what time span are you looking at?
Which is kind of, just to go back just a little bit, our, we received this report right before Christmas. Our consultants are basically in a holding pattern until we say, we want you to go with 428 because if we go with 428, you're going down the road of recognizing that it's substantially damaged and you're going to have to meet these new codes, okay? And in doing so, you're probably looking at approval process, what did you say, Alderman Astor, you've been dealing with it several, two to three months maybe at best?
At best.
At best. And then ultimately, you still have, if you're going to mitigate it at its current location, either raise it, tear it down, rebuild it at its current location, or find a property and rebuild it, you're still talking about engineering, architectural, everything that's going to be necessary because the building has been substantially damaged so much and it has to be brought up to all the new codes. So, you're talking about months of design and then you're talking about a construction period after that. So, if you really want me to put a number on it, I would probably say a minimum of two years right now.
Mr. Stevens, my question is, say we, say we don't want the mitigation funds for the Stanley White and we want them for the other, can you separate that out? That's my first question. Can you separate the Stanley White out and just get the mitigation funds on these other properties that you say are substantially damaged?
I would be very interested to see how FEMA would evaluate the property and reimburse you on, yes, will they be submitted separately? Yes. Project work sheets separately.
So, if we didn't, if we don't apply for 428 for the Stanley White, what monies do we get to repair this property? Do we just get insurance funds that we have through our regular city insurance, or what monies are there to repair this in place without elevation or whatever and just to repair it?
You would, you may, and I'm not, I'm not the FEMA decision-maker here.
Well, I'm saying, would you just not mess with FEMA?
You would get your insurance proceeds.
Okay.
You may get FEMA funding, which would be whatever your deductible is, but the kicker is if you do not mitigate this property and it's a repetitive loss-type property and it's substantially damaged and you weren't to raise this property or to locate it somewhere else, you are risking the future of being able to get FEMA funds for it. So, in, at elevation six, and you can almost guarantee Florence was a seven and a half to eight flood event, Irene, I'm sorry, Irene, I'm sorry, Irene was a seven and a half to eight. Florence was about a 10 and a half to 11 depending on.
Okay. So, did it flood during Irene?
It did flood during Irene.
So, they had damage during Irene? So, this is a repetitive loss as far as FEMA is concerned?
This is a second loss in seven years from the head of the flood.
Just trying to make sure I understand this.
Yes.
I think it flooded during birthday as well.
I'm kind of understanding what Alderman Bingle was asking you. Normally, when a insurance claim comes through, they give you a certain amount of money to do the things that you need to do, but in this case, it's a possibility that you're going to find other things that's going to be wrong, so would they come back and take care of that problem as well?
Yeah, possibly, yes. I mean, you obviously can do that. The issue is what I, you know, when you think about the future of the property and the building itself, let's say we fix it like it is, Alderman Kinsey, and that property goes back to Stanley White Recreation Center and six months from now, we open them back up the doors and everybody's playing basketball in there again, okay? What I'm saying is, is our insurance company at this point, if we don't mitigate it, they have the right to say, no, we're not going to cover that because it's flooded twice and we're not going to cover that property anymore. They also have the right, FEMA does, to say, we're not going to give you any more FEMA funds for this property because you didn't mitigate it when we asked you to, or it's been substantially damaged and you didn't do anything to repair it. That's what I'm trying to warn you both.
Okay. Tell me this here, I'm going to use a very big word here, compromise. What portion of that foundation was compromised?
Foundation-wise, we really haven't done an investigation into the foundation. What we specifically have looked at is the damages sustained due to, I mean, the entire, the entire gymnasium floor is a loss.
Right. So, that was compromised, would you say?
Has to be completely, completely torn out and has to be completely redone. You also had about four and a half to five feet of water in the building, the entire building, maybe not as much in the locker rooms, which was an add-on at some point in the past, but every portion of that building sustained at least four and a half, five feet of water, which means all of that new cabinetry work, all the entryway, all of the block work now has mold that has to be mitigated out of it. All the gap spacing between the brick and the mold would probably have to be remediated, which means they'd probably have to shoot something in there to treat it, all kinds of different things, and you have in your full report, it's a full report, it lists everything that was compromised and the values that they put on it in that full report.
But I was just asking a question for the audience and get a chance to probably read that information, but I must use the term compromise, that was just the wooden floor on the concrete floor.
That's correct.
That was compromised, but actually the foundation of the building, you have your PE, so you're very knowledgeable to what I'm getting ready to say, but that part of the foundation was not compromised, only that wooden floor?
It was not noted in the report that there was specific foundation losses, but, you know, it's not out of the question in a low-lying area with, I guess, substandard soils where you have a lot of flooding, could potentially see some settlement and possibly cracking or whatever at some point. Now, can I confirm whether that's happened or not? I can't. I have it on there to do the detailed analysis and borings and everything else, but it is possible.
But based on your experience, we just looking at structure that has been compromised that?
Essentially, everything that's above ground, everything that's above ground has been identified as $606,733 worth of damage.
My main concern would be that we don't, you know, I feel based on the information that you provided that we need to put it under the list of all of the other properties to get the best bang for our buck, but my concern is that this building is a pillar in the black community and to have an average of possibly two years, what's an alternative for us in that community? Summertime's coming, we have a whole generation of children that play here and utilize Stanley White. What is the alternative for us in regards to if we do put it on this list, is there a way that we can go ahead and possibly take out a loan and start fixing it ourselves and then when we receive our funds back from, you know, the FEMA and the government, that we can go ahead and pay ourselves back so that we can move the process a lot faster than where we're at?
Anything is possible if the board wishes to do so. We'll say that if you're going back into the same location, you will need to elevate either the land or the structure such that it will be able to meet the new building codes because you're building a new building. So, any new building codes, any fire codes, any of that stuff that's relative to a recreation center would have to be done, which means engineering, architectural, probably six months at least on that, assuming they're not all backlog because of everybody else's losses and engineering and architectural needs, and then you've got to build it. Let's say it's a metal building. We're building a 20,000 square foot building out at the industrial park right now with the C1A. You're probably, a metal building is six months built out probably, I would say, okay? So, you're looking at a year at best case to just put a metal building back that is essentially just an open space metal building with maybe some restrooms in it. If you go back with brick and mortar engineered design to actually function as a recreation center, it's going to be much longer. I'm just trying to be realistic. I'm not trying to send a bad message, but I'm trying to be realist and given, and given the fact that the availability of contractors right now is very difficult. I mean, there's a lot of homeowners that they're getting people quote, it'll be four months before I can give you an estimate, not the building construction of it, an estimate.
Mark.
Yes.
Whether we do 428 mitigation or ever how we pay for this repairs to this building, it's obvious it's going to be a year, maybe even 18 months before something like this can be accomplished. Do you think you could get our Parks and Recreation Director to come up with some type of a plan on recreational needs in that community until this building is rebuilt, whether it's relocating to another facility and providing bus services or something, transportation services? We, it's important, I mean, you've heard me say this before, but I'm a firm believer if a kid plays all day, he sleeps all night. So, we need, we need to look at some alternative to provide some recreational needs for the children in that community.
Yeah, we, Foster and I would be happy to brainstorm, come up with ideas and bring that back to the board regarding, you know, transportation plan to get them over, say if it's, if it's basketball recreation, the only gymnasium we have at this point would be, you know, West New Bern Recreation that the city owns now. Are there other, you know, facilities that have basketball courts? Of course there are. Some of the churches have those, so maybe investigate.
Is J.T. Barber, does J.T. Barber have a gymnasium?
J.T. Barber has a gymnasium. I know the church that's for sale over on Simmons Street, they've got their outbuilding or their.
It's never been finished.
It's not damaged.
It's not finished, doesn't have a floor.
Understood. It's never been finished, but maybe that's a quick fix to get something worked out. I don't know, but there's all kinds of different things that, you know, Temple Baptist Church has a basketball and recreational court.
Well, they do more than just basketball over there in that recreation center.
I understand that, and that's some of the services I think we can still provide at West New Bern Recreation Center, but understandably, transportation sometimes becomes an issue, so being able to transport people to and fro would definitely be something we would have to look at, what kind of schedule you'd set up for that, what, you know, and then also you look at pickup points, safe places to pick up people, you know, that's sort of things we look at. You know, FEMA does have opportunities for you to apply, excuse me, for temporary facilities. We're looking to look at a temporary facility for the fireman training grounds because they still have firemen, they still need to train, still have to meet the needs of their requirements to keep their certification, so we're looking at a temporary facility of that. The whole point of the matter is, is even if you go to a temporary facility, you've got to make sure they restrict or regulate where you can locate those, which is probably not in a flood plain again. So, we would need to look and identify opportunities for that, so what kind of temporary facilities those may be? It may be a large double-wide trailer that has open space in the middle for those, you know, resource rooms where you could have the same, what I call recreational amenities. It's more of, you know, the classes or the after-school programs or whatever it may be, but there's different things that we can look at, but, you know, the main point of this is, and quite frankly, if it hadn't been for, you know, I know the community and I know there's a lot of people who have a lot of heart in this particular property, more than likely, this wouldn't even be coming before y'all, but understanding the significance of the Stanley White Recreation Center and what it means to the community is one of the reasons why it's before you tonight, because all of these others, in my opinion, are no brainers.
Let's go with Alderman Kinsey. You have a question?
Yes, sir. It's a lot going on this year for the city along with the budget for trying to replace a lot of things that has been destroyed. The budget that we put together for the two rec centers, are they one budget or are they individual?
Single budget. It's a single budget. We used to keep them separated out as in a Stanley White and as a West New Bern Recreation Center budget, but now we've kind of accumulated those into one budget. I think we still do separate out, you know, parks and then also the admin portion of it. Yeah, that's correct. We actually have an administrative ward for Parks and Recreation and then one called Facilities that does house the Aquatic Center and the two Recreation Centers, and the other one's called Parks and Grounds.
What time do the rec centers normally open up in the morning?
Eight?
Eight AM.
Eight AM. Until what time?
About nine PM. Nine PM. Except for Sundays.
The reason why I was asking those questions is because the summer's coming, so it's going to be pretty much a really strain on the other facility, trying to get programs and things in place to place these kids, so, I mean, we're really under a lot of pressure there.
Alderman Odom.
Just so, so what have we done? Have we done anything with Stanley White now? Like, we know that the flooring was pulled up, but there's no electricity, nothing going on in there where we could turn on some lights and open up a couple of doors and utilize it while we're trying to get FEMA payout?
I.
A makeshift building?
I'm sure it's full of mold.
Yeah.
Well, that's, here's my issue. Yes, you have mold. We're taking on the liability to put people in that building. If they get sick, that's our responsibility because we opened a building that may not be unhealth, or may be unhealthy. Secondly, the entire electrical system, I'm sure at four and a half feet of water in it, has been compromised.
So, we have, so basically we've done.
Which means that would have to be mitigated as before we'd open up the building because then you're creating a fire hazard. So, you know, there's, we'd have to get electrician to sign off on all that, so that's some of the issues I would see, just in saying, hey, let's just go open the doors and let people in.
But is it, well, obviously not that, but is it a possibility within this conversation we can figure out how much it would cost to go ahead and start that process because we still have a building, we still have foundation, and then once we go ahead and get approved by FEMA, then you can go ahead and figure out whether we're going to tear it down and elevate it or tear it down and move it somewhere else, but you're still able to utilize the building as long as we've obviously got it mucked out and done that, so there's some sort of activity? I don't know, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to think of something.
Has the building been mucked?
No, it has not, I don't know.
Alderman Best, you have a question?
Yes, Mark.
Yes.
I want the, I want the audience to, I hope everyone understand what we're trying to do here for as the 428 mitigation. If y'all understand that process. If y'all understand that process, if we move forward with that and the timeframe it's gonna take. And then if we don't move forward with the four twenty-eight, that we go head on and put taxpayers' monies and other monies into the gym to get it back open now and then potentially a year from now, two, from, a year or two from now, we have some of the same flooding and then you got to go through the process again. So I, I hope that the audience, y'all understand the four twenty-eight mitigation. Also, I know we were alluding to moving programs from Stanley White over to West New Bern and I just want to reiterate on that because I know there was a lot of problem in the community about people coming to me and I'm quite sure to Alderman Harris as well about they did not want Stanley White closed and the programs and, eh, all, all the different programs that Stanley White moved to West New Bern. If we do that, if we do move those programs to West New Bern, it's just for a temporary while until we get Stanley Wa- White back up and running. I just want to let the public know that. So it's not that we're trying, we're sitting up here saying that we're gonna move the programs over to West New Bern and that's where they're gonna stay and we're not gonna try to work and get Stanley White back open.
Alderman Best, I somewhat agree with you. What I, I would rather direct, if we could, I would rather see if we could work out with some of the community churches and the community spaces that are within the community right now, if maybe an after-school program could maybe be at this church and we would rent the space or lease the space or whatever. And maybe some of the other programs that they have, maybe within the community, try to find some resources in there and a temporary basis. I think it would make the residents of that community feel better about it. Uh, and it would be temporary to re-resolve that, but I believe there might, there may be some facilities within the community. I don't know if we've looked at that, but I certainly would ask Foster to do that before we considered West, at West New Bern.
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at it from a perspective of we already have West New Bern there, gym, everything. It's structured, we got staff there and everything. I, I just look at it from that perspective. The, the center is already there and it can, it can aid the, the community.
We don't have a park though.
Alderman Odom, do you have a question?
Um, yes, sir. Mr. Manager, if you could, could help me. I think tonight, we're at a point to make a decision on two things, whether we're going to mitigate or whether we're going to repair in its current state. And please correct me if I'm wrong when I go down this path. So if we mitigate, we either have to elevate it or relocate it. If you, and that's gonna be twelve to twenty-four months potentially. Or we repair it in its current state, we take the six hundred and six thousand dollars from insurance, repair it as much as possible in its current state. However, we are risking the fact that we will have no more coverage in the future. So we could repair it within six to twelve months is probably a reasonable timeframe. Do you agree?
Assuming we can get a contractor yet.
Get any contractor, six to twelve months. And then next year at hurricane season, we have another flood. We're right back to the same exact situation and we have essentially lost our opportunity for any FEMA funding because we chose to make the decision to repair it in place. Is, is what I'm saying correct?
Probably so, yes.
So tonight, the decision that we have to make tonight is, do we wanna go down the path of mitigating? Or do we wanna take our money and run, if you will? And that's the decision that you're looking for from us tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Um, just some direction for us to go ahead and, and, and ask our consultants to submit through the four twenty-eight plan on the properties that are substantially damaged. And to add to the point, if it stays in its current location, we just repair it as it is. You're, because it's been fifty percent damaged, I'm pretty sure Mr. Rue Jerry's in the, in the, is he out there? Amanda, uh, our, our building codes would still require us to bring it up to code, the new code, which means fire suppression, I would think, being it, a public building and the usage for it, as well as the electrical codes, as well as the H V A C lifting and bringing it above and so forth and so on.
So, so from, from my benefit, with that being said, the, the money that's listed here is not enough to do what would need to be done to get the facility opened back up in its current state. So in my opinion, we, we need to look to the mitigation aspect of it. That doesn't mean we're making a decision tonight or next week on actually what's gonna happen. We're just starting the process to get the funding. And then in addition to that, any of these options are s- six to nine months, best case scenario, twelve to twenty-four months, probably on an average. We need staff, I think, to come back with a plan on a temporary fix and temporary being the key word, whether that includes transportation, whether that includes other facilities within the, the community. But I, I think that's the decision point at least that I'm at tonight and I'm hoping that I'm on the right track.
Right, and, and all of those will have differing costs. So it may be that we have option one, option two, option three, to where the board chooses which option that they would like to go with.
Okay.
Alderman Harris.
Right, so I heard everything, the summary that Jeff gave, the only other thing about the four twenty-eight mitigation is, is yes, we're voting tonight, but at the end of this, when we do get to the point, we have to make a decision on whether it's gonna be elevated or moved. But my thing is if we submit it under this four twenty-eight mitigation, mitigation situation and we haven't done anything to say whether we think it would be a good idea to be eva- um, elevated, we're kinda stuck in a situation of we can't elevate it and we have to move it. That's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I think you have the choice. Is the choice either or, Mark, if I hear you say?
We want us, we're gonna vote to put this on, all of these properties under the four twenty-eight mitigation. The four twenty-eight mitigation means either elevate or relocate.
But, yeah.
But if we come back and, um, the plans come out and it makes no sense, the dollars don't equal out, it doesn't balance out to elevate, then the only other option we have is to relocate. When, at this point in time, we had the ability to go ahead and say, we're gonna mitigate each other ones and put this one to the side and possibly try and repair it. You understand what I'm saying? That's, that's where I'm at.
Once you go the four twenty-eight route, there's no going back on the other.
Right, that's what I needed you to say. There's no going back, either elevate or move.
The four twenty-eight mitigation money is gonna give you a, a lot. They're gonna give you money based on the, the value to rebuild that building, square footage, square footage. Uh, if we do it this, any other way, we're gonna get the six hundred thousand dollars and whatever our deductible is and that's the exact amount of money we're gonna get. So-
But if we do four twenty-eight, are we guaranteed that we're gonna get all of our money?
We don't know. But if we don't, but if we don't get mitigation money, we can still, we still can get the insurance proceeds and the deductible from FEMA.
But we can still do that now if it's not under the four twenty-eight mitigation plan, which is making us be stuck in a situation.
Well, I understand.
The community doesn't want it moved, they want it elevated.
I understand, but we don't have the funds. We would get a lot more money if we went through the four twenty-eight to pay for the elevation. So, uh, yeah. Based on that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we give staff direction to, um, apply for four twenty-eight mitigation funds for the old Parks and Rec Administration building on National Avenue, the B P Storage Building on Oaks Road, the training, the Fire Department Training Classrooms and the Stanley White Recreation Center.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion? Mr. Hughes, do you have anything you want to add to this discussion? Are we ready to vote? Now, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Before I cast my vote, I would like to know if the board allows. Is there anyone in the audience that want to speak on behalf of Stanley White? Just one individual? Cause I want you to make sure that you're understanding the four twenty-eight mitigation that we are about to possibly approve.
Yes.
If we have a motion and a second and we have a vote, is it, do we, we need to go ahead and vote on that and then we'll vote on this motion?
We do, yeah.
Let's do that, Alderman Best.
We need to come back.
We'll start the roll call with Alderman Odom and then we'll take up that motion.
Alderman Odom, I thought you was a, okay. Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
No.
Alderman Bingel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Alderman Best?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to the board that if there's one individual from the community that would like to speak on behalf of Stanley White in Red Oak Street before four twenty-eight mitigation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Good evening, Mayor Outlaw, members of the Board of Alderman. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. The decision has been made as far as what now, that motion was to, uh, pursue the four twenty-eight mitigation plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, uh, I'm Bernard George, eighteen twenty-two Beaufort Street and members of the community have asked me to speak on their behalf. Uh, we've had several meetings in the community concerning the, uh, damage to Stanley White and apparent lack of action there and, uh, we wanted to seek some answers. And, uh, the, tonight, uh, you've had your first discussion, public discussion about the future of Stanley White. And, uh, we appreciate that because the community has been inundated with, uh, rumors of, a- and some of them have been somewhat outlandish. But your four twenty-eight hazard mitigation plan, well, the process itself, my understanding is that that's also for debris removal. Uh, is that not right?
Mm-mm. I don't think so. I mean, I-
You, well-
One part of that plan is for initial debris removal.
You talking about debris removal from tearing down the building?
Uh, debris removal for the, uh, results of the devastation there.
What type of debris? Leaf and limb or C N D?
No, inside building.
Oh, yeah, oh, it's gonna, I'm sure it's gonna pay for removing the contents of building, the damaged contents.
It's gonna have to.
So some members of the community have been concerned that the building has sat and it, it appeared that nothing had been done. But regardless, the community has met on several occasions. Uh, we sent you a letter a couple of weeks ago concerning our concern and, uh, I'm very glad that the community has come out tonight. You see them here out of their busy schedules, many of them have been devastated by the hurricane, but we feel that this is extremely important to the community because Stanley White Recreation Center is more of a community center, is the heart and soul of the community. And there are buildings throughout the city that have been flooded, not once, twice, but three or four times. And they have been repaired. Uh, we don't want to see repetitive damage there. We want to see, uh, as we discussed, uh, a few days ago, B B B, Build Back Better. And, uh, I feel in a way that if it would have been built originally like it should have been, that we wouldn't have suffered the kind of damage that it is. Uh, my family has lived near Stanley White for close to a hundred years, ninety-seven years to be exact, right adjacent to it. So I know that it is low. And, uh, today I spent a lot of time researching in the library exactly how Stanley White was developed and what are some of the problems with Stanley White. Uh, Alderman, uh, I mean, uh, Mayor Dana Outlaw, during this period when Stanley White was developed, your father was the city manager and led the city, uh, very, uh, had very visionary leadership in building both Stanley White and West New Bern and, uh, doing some of the other work here in the city to provide recreation, which through a, uh, petition and survey was determined one of the most important things that the city could do. Now, uh, you also, some of you might remember our first forays as a all-American city and it was turned down because it was determined that the city had not done enough in the low-income neighborhoods. Uh, I live in a no, low-income neighborhood. Most of us here do. And because we live in a low-income neighborhood, does not subject us to second-class citizenship service because of that. We're all Americans, we're all hard-working, we pay our taxes and we expect, we are first-class citizens, we expect first-class service. So Stanley White, let me give you a little, uh, background on Stanley White and I'm not gonna keep you long. Henderson Park was donated to the city for recreation purposes by Dr. Henderson. And decades later, in the seventies, Stanley White and West New Bern was, was built. It was built with federal and state funds and some local funding. Uh, they were twin, uh, recreation centers. Uh, for those of you who may have a little gray in your hair, you might remember that they were supposed to be twin buildings. One supposedly in the white neighborhood and one in the black neighborhood. Uh, Stanley White was finished a little differently because there were additional funds available for low-income neighborhoods. Because the federal government in its, uh, wisdom understood that neighborhoods, you can't treat all neighborhoods the same, just like you can't treat your children the same. They need different things. And recreation is a major building block in our community. Not just recreation, but what it provides for our senior citizens, our clubs, our elders, younger people. It's the center, heart and soul of our community. And to see it removed and relocated someplace else, we feel flies in the face, in fact, of Stanley White, which it was named after. Stanley White, as you recall, was a charismatic, much-beloved athletic director at Cedar Street, who died, who gave the ultimate sacrifice, making repairs to, to, for neglected maintenance of the city. Uh, as one person said in our earlier meeting, uh, he died at Kefal Park because there was electrical problems and he himself went in to cut the lights on and of course, he died, was electrocuted. But the park was named after him because there was no one in the community who had done as much for the youth and for the elders as Stanley White. So we feel that that's a legacy to our community. We're celebrating forty-four years since it was built in nineteen seventy-five. And Alderman Bingel, your mother-in-law was one, she was on the Recreation Commission, the Advisory Commission, and she fought for recreation, she fought for those two, uh, uh, recreation, uh, parks and, and, uh, facilities because she realized how much they meant to our city. And we just asked you this evening to consider, yes, consider mitigation. We don't want to throw away money, but we don't want a hasty decision made where you take away the legacy of not just Stanley White and what he has done for the city and for our community, but you take away the heart and soul of our community where we meet, where we dine, where our kids go. It's a neighborhood where truly a village has raised the children, where mothers can send their children to Stanley White and not worry about how they were gonna, uh, uh, sometime, how they're gonna eat or who's gonna take care of them because that village centered around Stanley White. And we feel that to move Stanley White, to consider moving Stanley White to that, from that location would be a terrible injustice to our community. With that, after applause, there's nothing else I can say.
Any other comments on item number fifteen? Okay, this time we'll go to item number eight. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board. Item number eight is consideration by the board to adopt a resolution authorizing uh, the installation of additional streetlights. Uh, as you may recall, Alderman Astor had requested some additional street lighting be evaluated at the entrance of Taverna Circle and Old Airport Road. Our direct, uh, Department of Public Utilities has done so and determined that the current lighting does not meet the city's lighting standard for our streets. Uh, it is recommended that the installation of two lights at a cost of three thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-four cent, along with the monthly utility charges, uh, services of sixteen dollars and eighty-eight cent, be added to the public works budget. Uh, there's a memo that's included in your packet from Director of Public Utilities and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Board have questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we consider adopting a resolution authorizing the installation of additional streetlights.
Second. Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number nine, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Um, item number nine is consideration by the board to approve a lease with the Veterans Employment Base Camp and Organic Garden. Um, as many of you know, Lovey Wallace Singleton, who's here in the crowd tonight, has been operating that, uh, facility now for a little over sixty-four months, which was the original term of the lease for that particular use. Um, it has served as a garden to assist disabled veterans through the use of horticultural therapy and assist disadvantaged and homeless veterans with transitional employment. Uh, the lease, uh, as it existed, expired on the thirtieth of November two thousand and eighteen, and Lovey Wallace Singleton is here tonight if you have any questions for her, but she is seeking another lease for a term of sixty months at a rate of one dollar per year, which was what the original lease was. Uh, this new lease will be directly with VECOg, and the intent to consider the lease has been duly advertised as required by state statute. Uh, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board have questions? Uh, Lovey, we'd like to thank you for all you're doing. I remember when you came up here years ago, and we didn't know if you would be successful or not, but you, you've been so successful, and we thank you so much for what you're doing, not only that, but all your other Veterans Affairs things you do. Thank you for doing.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion approving a lease with the Veteran Employee, um, Employment Base Camp and Organic Garden.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number ten.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number ten is consideration of adopting a resolution approving the acceptance of a public beach and waterfront access grant and authorizing myself to execute that grant agreement. Um, as you recall, in two thousand and eighteen, a grant application was submitted to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Division of Coastal Management uh, for a public beach and coastal waterfront access grant. The application that was sent has been approved by that agency for the amount of ninety-seven thousand dollars, which requires a local cash match of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Um, that can also be in kind, um, uh, for a total contract amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, the grant funds will be used for site improvements at Martin Marietta Park. Uh, those improvements will include a gravel driveway turnaround and parking pad, a soft beach launch site, an ADA accessible floating dock and kayak launch with a walkway from the parking lot, a shelter and restroom, and general amenities such as benches, picnic tables, grills, et cetera. Um, Mr. Hughes has included a memo in your packet. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions?
Mayor, uh, no questions. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that, um, the Board adopt a Budget Ordinance Amendment for the Martin Marietta Park Project Fund.
So someone? Backup one?
Backup one?
Oh, okay.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a.
That's not the right item.
Beg your pardon?
That's not the right item. It's the resolution to accept the grant, not the budget amendment.
Number ten.
It's number ten.
Oh, okay. Yeah, all right, going to number ten.
Okay, is that your motion?
Yes.
Is that, you good, Mr. Stevens? Okay, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number eleven, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Uh, item number eleven is consideration to adopt a resolution to decrease uh, the membership of the Housing Authority of the City of New Bern. Um, as you recall, our special meeting on the fifteenth of January, uh, the Board, uh, was looking to consider reducing the size of the Housing Authority of New Bern uh, from its current eleven members. Uh, there is a, a, a motion and a second recommendation by Alderman Odom to, uh, have three different options available, that being a Housing Authority Board of five members, seven members, and nine members. Those proposed resolutions have been drafted and have been included in your packet tonight uh, to where whatever the Board so chooses can be accommodated based on your decision. So, uh, myself and the attorney have, uh, answers if you wish to ask any questions.
Board have questions?
If no one have any questions, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we make a seven-member, uh, board.
Second.
Second. Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Yes, sir.
That would be a motion to adopt the resolution that's in your package regarding the seven-member board, and you'll notice one of the, the details of that is, is which seats. What I've provided to you, um, is, is a resolution that drops it to seven, but also excludes four seats, two of which are currently vacant due to renovations, two of which are members whose terms have expired. So I just commonsensically removed those four seats. As it turns out, the resulting seats still fall on a staggered schedule. But I want to bring out here.
So no issues or anything like that? It would not create any new issues?
Exactly, but just want to make sure that you're aware of that finer point. So the motion would be to adopt that resolution.
And, but, okay, are we good?
Yes.
Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Item number twelve, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Item number twelve is a resolution approving a revised schedule of maximum speed limits as defined in section seventy dash one thirty-two through seventy dash one thirty-five of the City of New Bern Code of Ordinances. Uh, pursuant to an agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation dated January the thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen, the city accepted ownership and maintenance of certain portions of Old Airport Road identified as SR eleven eleven and SR nineteen ninety-seven, uh, including Bridge number ten. Uh, the city in its design phase of making the improvements to Old Airport Road from Taberna to Landscape Drive, um, we identified, uh, certain aspects of, of needs for a reduction in speed limits. The residents in that area have also expressed concerns to Alderman Astor regarding the speed limit along this road, and it has been requested that the speed limit be reduced from forty-five miles per hour to thirty-five miles per hour. At this time, there are only three sections of the road totaling point five-one miles that are still owned by NC DOT as they are outside of the city limits. Um, however, NC DOT is currently in the process of modifying their ordinances to change the speed limit to meet this particular, uh, speed limit requirement as well. So, uh, we are happy to answer any kind of questions you may have, but ultimately, the speed limit on Old Airport Road from Taberna to the end will be thirty-five miles per hour.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, for taking care of that, please. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt, make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a revised schedule of maximum speed limits as defined in section seven oh dash four-three-two through seven oh dash one-three-five of the New Bern Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yes, sir.
When would that take place? When would that take effect?
Our section takes effect immediately as soon as we, uh, as soon as you adopted that, and we get it posted, uh, to our, our committee code. Uh, but ultimately, right now, and then I know DOT is in the process. Do you have any update on that?
Oh, quick enough, thank you.
Item number thirteen.
Um, item number thirteen is relation to item number ten, which you approved above. This is the Budget Ordinance Amendment acknowledging receipt of the waterfront access grants from the NC Department of Environmental Quality Division of Coastal Management as referenced in item number ten. Uh, Mr. Sabatelli has included a packet, as well as the Budget Ordinance Amendment, and we'll answer any questions you may have.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion we adopt the Budget Ordinance Amendment for Martin Marietta Park Project Fund.
Second. Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number fourteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this last item is, uh, uh, a consideration by the Board to adopt an ordinance amendment to the scheduled fees and charges. Um, on the fourteenth of August two thousand and eighteen, the Board adopted the most recent version of the city's schedule of fees and charges. The schedule needs to be updated to take into account changes in the fire code of the state of North Carolina that became effective on the first of January two thousand and nineteen. There's a redline version that's included in your, uh, agenda packet, and myself or, uh, Fire Chief are here to answer any questions you may have. I think Danny Gill is also here, uh, our Fire Marshal.
Board have questions?
Just the, the pricing, um, first, Danny, question, um, so the automatic fire extinguishing system went from a hundred dollars to two dollars per head, I'm not understanding, that was redlined? So what does that mean? You count the number of people in the business?
A number of sprinkler heads.
Oh, I couldn't figure that out. I said, so you're gonna count the number of people in the place?
If you look on that schedule down a little bit further, you'll see where sprinkler systems is lined out. Um, the.
Right.
What the fire code did was took the two systems and combined them into one permit.
So they're paying a hundred dollars plus two dollars per head?
Yes, ma'am.
I see, okay. I, I, I was like really confused about that. I assume you've got this pricing all in line here because these are gonna be new price items for the public, and I want to make sure they're aware of them. I'm, I'm skimming through to make sure they took out the R fees, because we don't have a R facility. Yeah, but that's not, this was. I know, but when, but when you vote, you're voting for all of them, so I just want to make sure. Everything that's redlined, correct? Only what's redlined?
This is the same schedule of fees that you've already previously adopted with the exception of the items that are in it.
So I'm gonna continue.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion we adopt ordinance amendment for the scheduled fees and charges.
Second. Motion and second, is there discussion? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we did fifteen, so sixteen appointments, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Yes, um, I had recently appointed, uh, Ronnie Lovick to the Police Civil Service Board, but he wasn't, I guess his contact, he didn't get the contact information, became busy, so now this is opened up again. So I would like to appoint Canell Humphrey, who lives at six oh three Watson Avenue, uh, to this board. Uh, Madam Clerk, I would hope that you would, uh, contact her in a timely manner and make sure that she's on board and we get her all sworn in or whatever. So is it, does it work that you don't swear them in till, till a meeting, so that's the reason for the lag, because they don't always meet?
Well, they get a letter immediately after they're appointed.
Right.
Um, and I know Mr. Lovick said he just didn't recall his letter, so I sent him another copy of it. Um, they can either, they usually come in right away and are sworn in, but if we have a hearing that's coming up, sometimes they'll wait for that hearing and come in early that day and be sworn in there.
Well, she's very energetic, she's been involved, um, she's very proactive in the, um, policing, you know, in the, uh, neighborhood watch program, so, um, I think she'll be a great addition to this board.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Do you have any more, Alderman?
No, sir.
Um, Mr. Best, did you, did you have, what were you?
No, we didn't.
No, we first one.
No, we approved.
Yeah, we did.
Motion by Odom and, uh, seconded by Kinsey, unanimous.
Okay, uh, Alderman Harris?
Yes, um, I, um, appointed someone, and then they're moving for the HPC. So the new person I would like to appoint is Peggy Broadway.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Uh, aye.
Yes.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Anything else?
That's all I got.
Okay.
Nothing.
Okay, Alderman Kinsey?
Not tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
Not today.
And Alderman Odom?
No, sir.
Okay, this time we'll go to the attorney's report.
Attorney's report tonight, Mayor.
City manager's report.
Three items, real quickly, Mayor. Um, first off, uh, just recognizing another group of our Leadership Craven class that are here, uh, with us tonight as part of their, uh, requirements to meet certain points, uh, to graduate from the Leadership Craven class. They have to attend certain public meetings, so, uh, recognize the last group that was, yeah, y'all stand up, recognize. Um, and, and that's part of our Chamber of Commerce's Leadership Craven, uh, class. It's a multi-week program to where they visit different, uh, uh, different things throughout our community. It may be education, it may be, uh, small business, it may be, uh, government, uh, whatever it may be, and, and news media. Uh, they attend a lot of different things, learn about our community, and hopefully become future leaders of our community in whatever aspect, uh, uh, they so choose. Um, secondly, um, uh, just keep in mind, uh, that our retreat is this Saturday, uh, twenty-sixth, starting at eight AM at the Belt and Services Conference Room. Um, we will have a, a, a small breakfast at seven-thirty, uh, was probably when it'll arrive, we're gonna try to start at eight o'clock.
Seven-thirty? I'm bringing breakfast, that's too early for me.
Seven-thirty, yeah.
Well, we're starting the meeting at eight o'clock, so if you plan on putting anything in your mouth before then, I would recommend that you probably get there before seven-thirty. But, uh, y'all had to ask.
I'm bringing coffee, you know.
The Board.
Quarter to eight, seven forty-five.
The Board made the motion to, uh, start the meeting at eight AM, so that's what we have on the schedule. Uh, we have our morning sessions, I think the Board has asked for us to do departmental overview and vision for the next fiscal year, uh, from all of our different departments, so we will be going through all of that, uh, with, uh, I think you said, uh, twenty minutes maximum per. And then, uh, we, that probably will take us all the way up until about lunchtime. Um, and then we will break for a, a quick lunch. Uh, the afternoon session, uh, is primarily gonna be stormwater and drainage, and, uh, we will also need to discuss, uh, the future of our, uh, electric utility rates because we are, uh, being predicted, it's being predicted that we are going to have an increase in our, uh, electric rate wholesale cost from Duke Energy, and that rate has already been, has already made it through the Rate Committee, uh, at, uh, Nekempa, and is coming up to the full board's meeting, I think, on Wednesday, is that correct, Charlie?
Tomorrow.
Uh, so they'll be probably recommending that approval as well. So we will have, uh, we will know for sure, uh, tomorrow whether that does, and if so, we'll have that discussion on Saturday uh, as to what boards it chooses that they wish to do. Um, and any other topics that the Board wishes to discuss at that point, we can do so, but that's what we have as the agenda so far.
Can we change that time from eight to nine? Seriously. I'm gonna bring a lot of coffee.
Anything else, City Manager's report?
Uh, I do, I have one other item that we need to discuss. Uh, as you recall, there have been some discussions, uh, between the Board, uh, I think in our last meeting as well, with the Green Park Terrace LLC, uh, with regards to, uh, the loan that, uh, they, uh, have with the city. Um, that has since been kind of renegotiated. Uh, and, uh, we, Scott, as well as the attorney for, uh, Green Park Terrace, uh, um, and Autumn Chase, as they're kind of known, uh, now, uh, they, they actually have, uh, come to terms with, uh, the promissory note, as well as the deed to trust. All of those documents have pretty much been finalized. You have those items before you tonight to review. Uh, the terms are the same as was, uh, agreed upon, which is one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, at a zero percent interest rate, uh, spread through payments over a ten-year period. Uh, the first payment will become due July one of two thousand and nineteen and continue, uh, through and include June first of two thousand and twenty-nine, which will be the final payment. Any other items that you're aware of that are on there, technical terms?
Um, this is consistent with the term sheet, that's my understanding that they proposed. Um, one thing that's a little out of the norm is that they're proposing that they don't be assumable by a subsequent buyer, so that if, uh, another entity comes in to operate, um, the properties, that, that our note would stay in place. And.
Well, don't you get an opportunity, uh, most of the time, to, to vet the potential mortgage on?
No, sir.
You know that?
It'll be assumed, yes, sir.
My question is the payoff, they're saying a payoff less than the amount. So the payoff is a hundred and ten thousand versus a hundred and twenty, then I thought we weren't gonna allow a less than. Do you see it, number three?
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, that's.
That was typo.
That's a typo?
Yeah, this just came in at four thirty.
Okay.
Proceedually, what we're doing tonight is just make, getting some direction from the Board to make sure that these general terms are acceptable. On your next agenda, you'll have a resolution before you that lays out the financial history of this project, the fact that we have two promissory notes and two deeds of trust in place, this is effectively a refinancing. a refinancing.
Gotcha.
And a partial debt and interest forgiveness.
Okay. Let me ask you this. Could we possibly approve this at the retreat? This time's kind of of the essence. They really wanted to get going on this renovation. We won't lose.
You could. We'd need to call a special meeting at the same time so that we have an agenda with an action item to let you do this. I don't, I spoke with their lawyer today. They're not so concerned about getting these documents in place. They're more concerned about the board giving the mayor authority to execute the, to endorse the insurance proceed check that they have in place and subsequent checks. Their board, their board voted today to approve this proposal to you. So, that is an affirmation. Their lawyer has affirmed that to me.
Well, anybody that would pay that would assume our note's gonna assume the first mortgage and the payment history to us as the third and have a second. I'll go with somebody else assuming the loan.
Yeah, I would. I just wanna make sure they correct that. There's not a less than what's owed payoff?
Exactly. Yeah. We, I mean, again, this, I hadn't even looked at this yet. This just came in at four thirty.
That's the only thing I see that would bother me on this right now.
So, this will be, this will be vetted and incorporated into a resolution. But I think their most pressing issue is making sure that you're comfortable with the proposal. Their board is committed to it. Their attorney has affirmed that to me. And if that makes you comfortable, then the city manager tomorrow could endorse the insurance check to get the work going.
No.
I wanna see the document that you've reviewed, and you're okay with all this blue writing and red writing. I want you to make sure.
Let's go with what the mayor said about special call meeting, and we'll take care of it on Saturday.
Okay.
Can we do that Saturday?
Yeah. Why don't you go ahead right now and make a motion?
Want me to make a motion?
As long as there is.
Is there, is there anything, Mr. Davis, is there anything in here that consequences of not paying or missing payments?
Foreclosure. Yes, sir. This is the exact same. Well, at noon today, I reviewed the first draft of these documents and verified that they were precisely the same form documents that we used twenty-two years ago. So, I'm comfortable with those documents. These came in at four thirty with these two changes that they caught on their side that were inconsistent with the term sheet. I was in the meeting at four thirty. Didn't have time to look at my term sheet to look at their proposed changes to see if they make sense or not. So, that's kind of where we are. But yes, if they don't pay, then we're right back where we are with foreclosure.
Jesus.
With the benefit of not having.
This time, we don't have to wait twenty years for them not paying before we.
That's correct. And we don't have a intervening note ahead of us.
So, is there, is there anything in the guidelines says if they missed two or three payments that we?
Default to default. Ten days. Default, fifteen days.
After one payment.
One payment is fifteen days. It's over.
Okay.
Item number five kind of covers the default remedies. It's twelve percent interest annum, per annum, and the lender, if we so choose to pursue it through attorney's fees, would be subject to those attorneys, paying those attorney's fees.
But there's no, there's no difference in our situation five years into this new agreement than we are right now, with the exception that right now, we have leverage because there's a check that's waiting to have our signature correct.
That's right. As time goes by, two things happen. In theory, the property may appreciate, but if not, the principal on the primary note is being reduced, so the equity is increasing in the asset.
Gotcha.
We had a six hundred thousand dollar note that was paid off in the last twenty years, so they went from a million dollars to five hundred thousand.
Do we have the financials on their first note, what that looks like, what that agreement is?
The housing agency?
North Carolina Housing.
Yeah. I think roughly the balance is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I don't have a precise number.
So, we don't know the repayment terms or what that agreement is? It could be a hundred-year note with them?
I don't have an opinion. I could find it, but I think I may have it.
Thirty or forty years, I wanna say.
Yeah. I was, in our discussion, I was under the impression that they had approached them about redoing that.
Refinancing, but they were waiting to see what was going on with ours.
Right.
I'd make a motion to have a special call meeting on Saturday, January twenty-sixth at eight o'clock in regards to the finalized resolution and promissory note so that once we agree and vote on it, then we can give the mayor, I mean, the city manager direction to sign the checks.
Yeah, at City Hall. Eight o'clock at City Hall.
Oh, I thought it was gonna be.
Where you mean?
Wouldn't know where, aren't we at?
That's our retreat meeting that we have this Saturday, is what you're talking about?
Yeah, well, that's what the mayor was saying.
I mean, do we have to call a special?
Yeah. Well, you can't add it to the agenda without giving the public notice of what's on the agenda. So, let's just get this thing bulletproof so that we're not making a mistake on a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
So, can we have this special call?
Yes. At the retreat. It's perfectly fine. At eight o'clock.
Okay. So, like I, whatever, everything I just said.
Just date time in place.
Yes.
In your motion.
I said, I said everything then. I said January twenty-sixth, eight o'clock at the retreat.
But where is the retreat?
Development Services.
That's what I need. Yep.
Boom, ping. There you go.
Second to the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed say nay. Anything else on city manager's?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, do business. Mr. Oden?
Mayor, I have a question for either Development Services staff or city manager. We had a meeting yourself, and you, myself, and Alderman Kinsey with the group that I believe has met with some other members before, and there was some concerns over the phone number not being either answered or not getting valid information for the hurricane hotline. And I wanted to express some concern over that. I'm not sure what direction we need to take, but a number with no good information on the other end is pretty worthless.
We discussed that I've met with Mr. Magieri, and it's obviously a training issue. They haven't, they don't have the time or the staff to properly train, so that's why I'm kind of asked or asked direction to the city manager to have somebody brought in to answer all these questions because I got the same feedback as well. I believe Alderman Astor got the same feedback that people either called and their calls weren't returned, or when they called, they were told, oh, that number is just for elevation and buyout, nothing else, and that was incorrect as well. But it's being answered by the admin in Development Services. That's the issue.
So, that's definitely.
Is that correct, Amanda? Where's Amanda? Is that correct?
So, that's a concern that we need to address at some point in time, whether, I don't know if right now was appropriate because I'm not sure if we have the answers. But do we have a part on our retreat agenda that's just some miscellaneous if we have some time at the end?
Says, I have on the agenda other topics as needed, so we have an opportunity to discuss that. Second comment, I was at the county board meeting this morning, and I would encourage anyone who has concerns or questions about the convention center to view that meeting. There was a lot of good information that we heard this morning. It's really an issue not so much with money. It's more of a time issue. And there's really good information there, so I would encourage anyone to listen to that if they have questions regarding that. That's all, sir. Thank you.
Alderman Best?
I just want to recognize and thank you, Commissioner Sampson, for being a part of our meeting tonight. Also, I just want to say thank you to those that attended the Martin Luther King Outreach Ministry Prayer Breakfast that was held at the flame on Monday. We celebrated Dr. King. I think the program was really a great success, and we thank you for your support. That's all I have.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes. You have that information for me that we pass out to each individual, please? I have New Bern Church of Christ outreach. They assisted a lot of individuals during Hurricane Florence, and now they're looking to come to the community and bring about six eighteen-wheelers of furniture, brand-new furniture, to give to victims that lost completely everything in their home. And I would like to use the farming museum, the old one, to store the furniture in there for at least a month until it's all given out. They've taken applications to screen everyone to make sure that they're telling the truth and that they're the ones that really needs the furniture. And as soon as we can make this decision, he will start the phone calls first thing in the morning. So, this is the information before you tonight that.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
I second it. The only issue I have is the group for the.
African-American cultural.
Which isn't really, it's not a lot of public knowledge right now, but they meet there. Is there a way that they'll still be able to meet in that building?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay. Because we like to meet on-site.
Yes.
Okay.
Are we gonna put a timeframe on this?
Keep it a month?
One month? Is it all you need?
Well, they said three weeks, you know, but they're having six eighteen-wheelers to come in.
Okay.
I figured thirty days.
I just think we should have a defined number on that. Mr. Attorney, is there any issue with doing this?
Can we just say then through the end of February, make sure you come in for one weekend of January?
When are they gonna arrive with this? They waiting on us?
Yes, yes. They're gonna make the phone calls tonight and start having the trucks to come in this. It's all bringing the furniture that they're giving to individuals.
Motion by Alderman Kinsey, seconded by Alderman Harris.
Yes.
And is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed say nay.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Yes. We spoke with the group, yourself and Alderman, Alderman and the management with this group from East Carolina Workforce Development, and they're giving us about ten individuals free labor to help us with our ditches, to start digging them out. Mark, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. They, there's a program that's being offered, I guess funded through the state. It's an organization, and excuse me, I apologize to those folks because I can't remember the exact name of the organization. Maybe y'all recall it. But ultimately, they have received an approval through the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development to employ individuals who may have long-term unemployment or may have been unemployed due to their business, the business that they work for shutting down, whatever it may be as a result of Hurricane Florence, whatever it may be that meets that certain criteria. They have received funding to employ these individuals, pay for their salary, whatever that may be, cover them through their insurance, and provide an opportunity for them to be employed through different governmental agencies. They approached us about the opportunity of utilizing those individuals at the city of New Bern. We obviously, at no cost to us, all we have to do is provide them a supervisor to guide them throughout the day. We were very interested in that. We did, you know, obviously share with them a couple of certain things that we would potentially have issues with. But for the most part, we were very receptive to their requests. I've since then passed that along to Matt. I think Matt contacted them that same day with regards to trying to work towards getting those individuals here and getting those boots on the ground so that they can help us with various operations within our division. So, that's kind of where it's at right now. Obviously, they told us it would probably be several weeks before they could get all their red tape cleaned up, but just that's where we are as far as the update.
The name of the group is NC Works. It's Greenland out of Kinston.
Yes, that's it. Greenland.
And they're serving Craven, Pampico, and Wayne County. Those are the counties that they're serving. So, I think it's a real good opportunity for us to get some manpower.
Okay. Alderman Astor? Yes, sir. First thing, I failed to say something to Foster, but Foster, congratulations on that grant. I appreciate you taking all the opportunities that you can find to find us money for our parks and doing a great job with that. Thank you. Also, Mayor, Commissioner Booker, Denny Booker, as well as E.T. Mitchell and myself have had some conversations. We've got a bit of a problem. I'm sure many people that live in Carolina Colors would recognize at Thurman Road and Highway seventy where the intersection just does not line up. You almost have to meet bumper to bumper, front bumper to front bumper to make a turn at that intersection. So, I contacted Denny, and we are, we are working on trying to get someone from DOT. There's already been some conversations with the engineer, but I just wanted to let the people know that live over in Carolina Colors and Evans Mill and Old Airport Road area and Thurman Road area that we are working on trying to come up with a temporary solution, understanding that in the next probably twenty-four months, it's gonna all be torn out anyway. So, we are trying to find a temporary solution. And then, Mr. Stevens, what's the status on the quint that was flooded?
Great question. I think I'll defer that to the fire chief and allow him to come and make some comments.
Alderman Boyd. Yeah. Alderman Boyd.
As of last week, it was sent back to a factory rep in the western part of the state. The insurance, we had to go through all the hoops of the insurance. They did what they could here, and we're hoping we'll find out something in the next week or so exactly the extent of the damage.
Can I ask, what is a quint?
It's one of our fire trucks. It's one of the ones with the ladders on it. It's in between the ladder truck and the engine popper. It can be either way.
So, it's in a stuff-in service center?
That's correct.
Okay. What are, what's the, what are you doing in the meanwhile, in the meantime?
We got one of our reserve engines in place.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? No. Okay. Alderman Harris?
I just wanted to figure out what the next step with Kidsville is since we're into the new year, and I know, exactly. I know we were gonna start campaigning and trying to raise some money, seeing as how we're down one facility, and we have Stanley White where it does flood a lot. We do need Kidsville up and running.
Our plan is still to do construction on Kidsville this spring. Yes, the hurricane did put a damper on starting those fundraising efforts, so we're getting ready to start pushing that. So, that gives you a good idea.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Okay. Alderman Bingle?
Just very quickly, I just wanna recognize my new friend, Ms. Smith, who Alderman Best introduced me. She is ninety-four years young because she's got more injuries. She got up the stairs quicker than I did, did not. But Jordan, if, after the meeting's over, if you would just stay and talk to Ms. Smith for a few minutes about, she's had a sewer issue that they, she was there on National into Oaks Road, and it was a backup, and it's still, you know, they haven't come back to fix or whatever they need to do. So, if you wouldn't mind speaking to her and seeing what we could do to help her, I would greatly appreciate it. So, the man is here, Ms. Smith, so make sure he talks to you, and we'll get you squared away. But thank you very much for being here tonight. I appreciate it.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Yes.
I just wanna know, the project that on Trent Road where you're cleaning out the ditch canal, whatever, is that a city project or is that state project?
You're talking about the one that's right there.
Right nearby by Bike Shop, yes. Is that something that's gonna continue on through?
City's working on clearing out those. I know Matt has allocated a significant amount of staff towards some ditch repair and remediation work that's due to, you know, whether that's blockages, trees crossing, whatever it is. As a matter of fact, we had a follow-up visit from the USDA group that we're here today who have made available some funds towards stream work and bank remediations and so forth and so on. Matt may have an update as to where, what the outcome of that was. But ultimately, they rode around with Matt toward a lot of the different locations that we had preliminarily identified. They, at that point, post this meeting, go back, and they do these worksheets. If it is eligible, they submit that to the state agency. The state agency then reviews that, and if it is eligible at that point, they will try to put a rough cost estimate on it. At that point, they will also employ a engineer to come do a full analysis and cost estimate of that work. And then at that point, they actually, once that comes in and it is fully eligible and they know what the exact cost is, then at that point, they start issuing funds for that. Now, there is a local match. That local match can be in-kind services, or it can be through engineering services that we would provide in-house or whatever it may be. But there is, there may be a monetary match or some in-kind match required of the city. I think it's a seventy-five, twenty-five program. Is that correct? Seventy-five percent funded through the state program and twenty-five percent through the match of local funds or in-kind labor. So, that's kind of where it's at right now, but they were here today. We visited about fifteen different sites or so around the city, specifically streams and embankment areas that were. specifically streams and embankment areas that were impacted through Hurricane Florence or blockages or whatever it may be.
That's the timeframe, do you have any idea? I'm sorry.
We tried to get them kind of hemmed down on the timeframe. They kind of estimated that the program would require, you know, they said they'd try to get it probably this week as far as those project worksheets, but once it gets to the state level, that's where they kind of lose their ability to predict what that is. But Matt, you want to provide any other detail about that?
I think you just covered what I said. We did this about 15 sites. They spent about four and a half hours with them. And at the end of the day, they pretty much said, hey, hopefully by the end of the week, they'll have some updates, they'll have their project worksheets submitted, and they'll have their recommendations, whether or not they're approved or not approved. And hopefully, I did mention the retreat this coming Saturday, so hopefully by the close of business on Friday, I'll have some of those preliminary reports.
So then they have to send it to the state for recommendation?
Once they submit their recommendation, once they submit their recommendation, it goes to the state, and then they'll send an engineer down here to do the full analysis. That's correct.
If they deem it eligible. So there's going to be some that they can deem that are going to be like, we know this is eligible. There's going to be some that they have some questions about, they'll send up, and their state agency will deem eligibility on that. And then ultimately, at that point, if they deem them to be eligible, they get an engineer to come down and evaluate all of those ones that become eligible, and then they try to put a dollar sign on it to actually do the work. That's when the funds would become-
What state agency is handling it? Do you know who they-
I'm not sure.
Is it, is it the-
It's USDA, and the representatives are out of Greenville. I don't know who they're sending it to from that point.
I understand everything what you're saying about USDA and your tour, but what I was asking about was the project that's over on Trent Road that's already in process. Is that project-
We're doing that with in-house, in-kind labor, and we will continue to do those regardless of whether we get the funding from the USDA, but, you know, we're only so much. This money becomes available, we can get actually contractors to come in and help, and it will help pay for those contractors to do that work and help get it done faster.
I just have a quick question. I was, one of my constituents texted me. With going back to the Stanley White real quick and the 428 mitigation, if you get approved, you have those two options of elevate or move. What, how do we decide from there what we want to do?
I think it's really a lot of discussion that the board still needs to have about what they want to do, move forward. And quite frankly, just like we did with Martin Mary at a park, I think it would be advisable if you're going to be looking at mitigating and building at the same location or building at a different location, whatever that decision may be, that you would get input from the community. Have a community event where they could all come together, whether that's at the Omega Center, whether that's at, wherever it may be that we choose that location to be, and get that input. Do the same little, you know, bullet points as to what they want to see, what they would like to have in that facility. It may be that they want, you know, pickleball courts built into the, you know, into the basketball courts, whatever it may be. You know, I think it's very advisable at that point. If you're starting with something new, that it's fresh and new, and it's going to be exciting for the community. Because, you know, as Mr. George pointed out, that building's 45 years old. And recreational needs and the community needs change over 45 years of what the community wants to see. So I would highly advise you to have some community meetings and get input and see what they want to see at a new facility if we're building one.
Gotcha.
Okay, anything else on new business? Do we need a closed session tonight? Anything further to come forth, board, or Alderman?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, same.